Like, call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag. United States of America and to Republicans who wish to man one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the roll call. Is Bill Thompson joining us virtually? Is he online? So, Bill is online with us. Mrs. Grimm, Patty Grimm will not be joining the meeting tonight. All other board members are here. Moves us to number two. Executive session announcement. We just came from an executive session prior to this meeting. Topic of the executive session was personnel. Number three. Public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? First public comment is on agenda items. Nothing? Anything online? Oh, we do have one.
Ray is, that's Ray. He's filling in for Mr. Bittler.
Oh.
So, he's working the online course.
Okay, thank you. Any comment online, Ray? Nothing? Okay. That moves us to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. One is on the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center budget and the second on the Potts Grove School District budget. The first, we have David Levin Good, who is the administrative director of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center, also known as the Western Center, to present the 25-26 budget.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back. Dr. Fring, thank you for the invitation. I'm here tonight to present the budget for next school year. But before we get started in a budget, I want to give brief highlights of what's been going on at the center. Currently, we have 40 students on co-op. And we have six more working on paperwork to go out. We have 11 students shadowing, and I think Mr. Strunk talked about the shadowing experiences at last meeting. We have a young man in our early childhood education program that is in dual enrollment with Shippensburg University. And the cool thing about his dual enrollment is he's going to Shippensburg, but if he still works in a childcare setting when he's going to school, his tuition is free. So, that is a program that the state set up, and hopefully they keep funding it for more educators because we need them. Last year, all of our cause students received their license before they graduated. This year, we have eight students already licensed. Everyone is done with their hours. We have four scheduled and two more to get scheduled. So, by the end of this year, we should have them all licensed before they leave. Our welding program is a now American Weld certified program. Our instructor last year is one of 20 in the country to be selected to go to Texas for training. So, it's exciting news for our welding program, which keeps growing. In our automotive and diesel technology programs, we are now the Northeast Training Center for Hunter Engineering. And if you have not seen the space, they've put over $500,000 worth of equipment in those spaces, and it is tremendous. And dividends pay off when we have outside people come in for training, so on, so forth. Something exciting that electrical students are doing. All of our lights in our building are being replaced with flat panel LED lights. We bought those for a dollar from PICO in their grant program. Electrical students are installing. So, it cost us a total of $1,000 and some minor supplies to install all new LED lights in the school. This year, we have 309 applications. The deadline was on March 15th. We have about 190 seats. So, Potts Grove had a total of 98 applications, and 74 of those were coming from eighth grade. The most popular program of Potts Grove, give me one second, was cosmetology. So, another big year. Cosmetology overall was our top program with Intro to Medical Careers being the second program and welding being the third. There's many more things going on at the center, but tonight is about the budget so we can start looking at planning for next school year. Go ahead. So, go ahead. I'm about to take up a lot of time tonight. Where do we get through this? You know, we look at a five-year history of what we've been doing and where we're at and where we need to go. The protected change in enrollment, right now, we're pretty steady around 700. I mentioned about the health program, having 48 students. We're actually looking into that program to see if we could take all 48 of those students next year by making one small shift. So, that might be an increase of 24 students in the health program, which is needed. So, our overall budget this year is up 6.55%. We're 5,64,000, but to the districts, it's up 3.26% overall because of the amount of subsidy received from the state and the funding. For Potts Grove, that is $31,773 or 1.95% change from last year's budget. The budget is calculated off the average daily membership over a five-year average. So, if you see, Upper Perk has taken the lead with that average, and that's why Spring Ford has actually decreased in the amount they pay. They're getting back $50,000 in the budget this year. So, you're around 23.65% of that five-year average. So, this is the distribution of that money. $31,000 change, like I said, and 1.95% overall. This calendar here is showing you the five-year budget and also the percent increase over those five years. So, some reasons why the increase in some line items, supplies due projected cost and, you know, steel and beauty industry and all of our industries that we're serving over there are going up, and there's definitely uncertainty happening right now. We did reduce the Student Activities Fund by $40,000. There was an increase to the Vocational Education subsidy from the state, which helped offset the cost to the districts. We're competing now at a state, but also at national level. So, we have a lot of students going to national competitions. Tomorrow, we're sending 54 students to Lancaster to compete in the HOSA competition, and hopefully we have some winners that go to nationals out of that. The big ask this year is for an assistant principal. This has been an ask for the last two or three years since I've been there, and that is budgeted in there. And the last ask is a market value adjustment, and this is for administration salaries to get back to the market average or close to over the next one to five years. So, this is a recommendation. Since 2020, we've increased by 200 students. We did lose an administrator who was a technology director. That technology director did more than just technology. She was also helping as an assistant principal in some manners. Our special ed population is still around 40%. Six new teachers in the building, and unlike regular education, those people are coming from industry, have no teaching background, and we need to support those teachers more to retain them so they don't leave to go back to industry. Instructional leadership, curriculum development, those are the reasons why we're asking for this assistant principal. Dr. Fring, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is something I think the superintendents are behind with this ask. So, the market value adjustment. Four administrators' contracts are up this year. Terrible planning on my part, but my contract, the business manager's contract, we each have agreements, and then the Act 93, which is the facilities director and principal, are up this year. So, doing a market study is off the Montgomery, Chester County, Delaware County, and Bucks County Career and Technical Education Centers. We did the market value study, and these are the averages and where we're at. So, this is something we're working on at the center with the Personnel Committee to come up with a solution. So, some exciting, well, any questions on that before I get to exciting news? All right. So, some exciting news. We did receive the $85,000 for the competitive equipment grant this year. We are buying a robotic welder, which is, any of you in this room could probably weld now, so come over and test it out. It's pretty cool technology, but it's technology what's in our local area. Last year, we received $150,000 from Senator Penny Cook for upgrades to our automotive program, and that also bought us a hybrid minivan, which has the ADOS system in, so the kids can learn on that and also learn about hybrid technology. Most recently, Senator Penny Cook awarded us $450,000 for safety upgrades, and that is going to be used this summer to put access control on all of our doors, so we'll be key lists in the future. So, thank you, Senator Penny Cook, for supporting us in our mission. We had another successful auction, and with that auction, we're taking that funding and buying a school van. Our school vans are from 2010, so we need to start replacing and age out the older vans. And last year, our NOCTI students, they had a 95% pass rate of advanced or competent on their NOCTI exam. So, once again, that exam is like our Keystone exams, but to have a 95% pass rate, I think six students overall did not pass, and there's some barriers with that. And I was told by my co-op coordinator, Ms. Mueller, to remind you about the co-op banquet for the co-op luncheon on October, April 9th at 12 o'clock. If you'd like to come, please reach out to Ms. Mueller. You can reach out to me. This is to be something to honor our co-op students, but also we thank our co-op employers because without them, we can't provide the education that we have over there. Any questions?
I do that all the time. If there's no questions, thank you, Dave. To the public, I think I've said it before. I have a grandson, and it's his third year attending the Western Technical Center. It is an amazing place, has benefited him greatly, and for the right child and the right fit, it's just a really nice supplement to traditional education. So, parents and people in the audience, if you're not aware of what's taking place there, I would just read about it, look at it online, or if you get a chance to visit, there are some nice, some tremendous educational opportunities going on there where kids are coming out and going right into the workforce and making a good livable salary with what's happening. And as you saw, Dave, talk about it, because you are using tradespeople, I guess is the right word to say, they are not necessarily teacher educated. So, you take a carpenter in who knows his skill, but then he has a certain amount of time to pick up teaching credentials. So, it's, it's an exciting place. Thank you. Any other questions you have of Mr. Levin Good? Thanks for being here, Dave. The moves us to our second presentation, which is the presentation of the Potts Grove School District budget for 25-26. And Ron Linky is going to present that. People listening to this know that it is the first round presentation, which is usually an eye-opener or a mouth dropper in terms of that. So, you collect all of the asks that are there for a budget, and of course, when you ask people what they want, rarely do they say more of the same or less of the same. So, it gives us a starting place to look at the budget, and you will hear from the timeline. So, as you see this, you'll see that it is what it is right now, and it gives us a starting place to work. Is that fair?
Pretty much, it's fair.
All yours, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Strunk. Good evening, everyone. You can go on to the next slide, Chrissy. As we talk about school district budgets, we also should start talking about Act One, which defines a district's ability to raise, what limit it can raise any tax rate. The Act One index came about in the law back in 2006, and it's made up of two indices, one being the statewide average weekly wage, which is the sum of all Pennsylvania wages used for unemployment purposes, and there's the federal index, which is the employment cost index for elementary and secondary education. And moving on to the next slide. This slide shows the history of Potts Grove's index, not the base index, over the last 11 years, ranging from a low of 2.4% up to a high of last year for the current school year of 7.1%. Next year's rate for Potts Grove is 5.3%. And the column to the right of that is the actual tax increases the district has made over those fiscal years. The last five years' average increase is about a 1.33%. Let's get into the meat and some potatoes of the budget here. You can advance that. Thank you, Chrissy. So, for next year, we're budgeting 78.1 million, just under 78.2 million dollars in revenues, 51 coming from the local tax base, 25 from the state government, and 1 million from the federal government. We are under the impression federal funding will still continue. We have no other information to lead us other way. Our understanding is, like everyone else has seen in the news, is the funding will be handled by a different department instead of the Education Department. So, we have a $2.9 million increase in revenues. So, that's positive. So, if you move on to the next slide, Chrissy, some of the positives are real estate taxes, and this budget currently assumes no tax increases. But real estate taxes are going up almost $720,000 because the assessed value of the district has gone up. The people in the community seem to be making more money over the years, so we are able to increase our earned income tax revenue line by 400 grand. Our basic ed is going up 272,000 when you compare budget to budget, and what we have currently in the budget is the same flat funded amount we would get for this school year. We have a next school year. We're unsure of where the governor's proposal is going to be with negotiations in Harrisburg. As we get closer to June and the final budget adoption, we may be able to firm up that number. Same thing with special ed subsidy. We're using the same 24-25 amount of funding that we're supposed to get for this year as the estimate for next year. And again, as we get closer to June, we'll see if we can firm up those numbers to be a little higher. Transportation subsidies going up about $125,000. Money that we're getting this fiscal year but can't be used until next fiscal year is this tax equity funds of $482,000. That was being delivered through the Ready to Learn Block Grant area instead of the basic ed. That's the state's way of trying to address the adequacy and equity portion of the basic ed funding formula. And our retirement and social security subsidies going up about $350,000. Some challenges on the revenue side is interest income. The Federal Reserve is expected to cut rates at least two times by the end of calendar 2025. That could significantly impact any interest earnings we would make, and any rate cuts after that could affect us as well. Next slide. On the expenditure side, we're budgeting $83.4 million expenses, which is roughly a $7.2 million increase. Now, I put this budget together last week for the very first time, so there's some areas I still need to dig into and refine. For example, salaries and benefits, that when you're comparing budget to budget, it looks like a heinungous increase, but I have to drill into the details to see what I need to clean up yet. So, right now, it's a nine, almost a nine and a half percent increase over the current year budget. And the makings up of that $7.2 million, next slide, Chrissy, please. In the budget, we have new staff requests for teaching positions in special ed and two instructional assistants, and they total about $610,000. Salary and benefits, like I told you earlier, is about 2.7, but that's the number I need to dig into yet and see if that's a legitimate number or not. Before I left the district the first time, we were trying to incorporate a transfer to the Capital Reserve to help fund, or at least have money set aside to address our Capital Reserve plan. If I'm not mistaken, that plan was in excess of 50 to 55 million dollars in total to address all the building's needs over the next 10 years. This helps keep that plan funded. In the 24-25 school year, there was no budgeted line item for that, so that's a complete increase for this year. Our charter school tuitions are going up almost $650,000. The facilities department has a listing of maintenance projects and some equipment they would like to purchase. Right now, everything is included, but we have a rating scale, if you will, of what should get taken care of first, which has a higher priority versus the other projects. So, we're going to have to go back and retweak that to adjust this number downward, obviously. But right now, that's at $856,000. We're increasing the line item for substitute teachers by $100,000. We're increasing the cost for transportation vehicles. In historically, the district, we budgeted about $250,000 for transportation vehicles, but one school bus is now $140,000, so we need to adjust that line item for inflation to accommodate for the vehicles. We need to keep the fleet current. And as well as we're having a lot of non-Potts Grove school buses driving our students to out placements, our resources are taken up, so now we have to contract with either CMD or an outside provider to get the children to school. And since we seem to be doing that a lot more, that's included in that line item for 280,000. Special education out placements and services are going up about at least $680,000. The iPad lease, I think, I believe, is the elementary level, is about 215 grand. And the high school band department and music department have requested some marching band horns and a new baby grand piano. Right now, they're currently in the budget for, that total in together of $40,000. So, that entire list is $7.1 million, which makes up the increase. So, in the snapshot, we have total revenues of just under 78.2, and total expenditures, that number does not tie to the last slide because I don't fund budgetary reserve when figuring the tax calculation. So, once you back out the budgetary reserve, that 84 million in expenses comes down to 82. So, our deficit is a little over $4 million in the moment. If we wanted to balance this budget today, that would require a 9.9%, a 9 point, almost 9.1% tax increase, which we cannot do since the limit is 5.3, and the school board has did the opt-out resolution not to exceed the Act One index. So, we have to get our pencil sharpened. Next slide shows a sample calculation with the various tax increases. The second column on the left there assumes no tax increase, and the four columns to the right are various increases at 1, 2, 3, and then the Act One index. Every 1% tax increase brings in almost $450,000 in revenue. On the next slide shows the average homeowner with an assessed value of about $120,000, and what various tax increases would be from a 0% all the way up to 3.5% in increments of .1. So, a .1% homeowner, this homeowner would see a $4 increase at a .1% up to a $170 increase at a 3.5% increase in taxes. The next steps for our budget, we have on April 8th is our Facilities and Operations Committee. The curriculum department and the pupil services department will present their budgets at that time. If our goal is to vote and pass a final budget on June 10th, we need 30 days prior to that for the vote on the proposed final. That would give us to unfortunately, April 22nd. The first mating in May is not 30 days away. So, then we would have to vote on a proposed final on April 22nd and then the final budget on June 10th. Any questions?
On the charter schools, you have a budget increase of $640,000.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Yes. So, what I did is I got the current enrollment of our charter schools, and we have about 180, 182 students currently attending charter schools. Using the 24-25 budget, which is the base to figure out what the tuition rate would be for next school year, I estimated what the actual tuition rate would be for next school year. A regular ed student attending a charter school is a little over $15,000. A special ed student going to a brick and mortar would cost us $45,000, and a special ed student going to a cyber school would cost us about $38,000.
And how did those numbers compare from last year?
The regular ed is about $800 to $1,000 higher than last year. Special ed, I don't have that. Do you have that data, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Yeah. I think for a special ed brick and mortar student, I believe the tuition rate is $38,000, and it's going up to 45. And a special ed cyber charter school student, I believe the rate for this year is 36,000? Or is it 34?
It's 32.
32, I'm sorry.
This year, and it's 36,142 for next year.
How are the numbers for the students quantity-wise?
Anne Marie has that. Do you have this number of students?
Yeah, and again, we're presenting this, yeah. We have, right now, you want to know, we have 182 students.
Oh, I'm sorry, but compared to the last year?
23-24, you mean, or 24-25?
The numbers you comparison that to 640, is the 640 all from, I guess?
It's a budget to budget. So, where was it in the budget for 24-25, and now what I calculate based on what the number of heads at the tuition rate, it's a $640,000 increase.
So, that's not for increase in students, that's just for the increase in the costs of charter schools?
It could be number of students that help bring that up as well as the tuition rate itself.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So, I don't know that everyone could hear what Dr. Lucas was saying. So, at the Operations Finance Committee in two weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
Will be presenting her part of the budget, which will include a breakdown of general education and special education. of general education and special education charter students, as well as a cost comparison with the virtual academy that we offer here. So you've heard some big numbers. The cost for us to provide a virtual education for our students at PGVA, at the Potsgrove Virtual Academy, is $2,500 per kid, significantly, very significantly lower than what the numbers were just shared here. So that will be at the Operations Finance Committee in two weeks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I want to thank Mr. Lenkey again. The budget is thousands of lines, and just a short time ago, we were here wrapping up 2324, and in that intervening time, he was able to put together this budget. We'll continue to, he and his department will continue to kind of comb through the budget and make sure that we're evaluating every one of those thousands of different line items. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. And so to recap, and Ron, make sure I'm saying this right, where we currently stand with this first blush board is we're presented with a 9.09, or just under 9.1 increase, which by law, we cannot approve. The max we can approve by law is 5.3% increase, which may be above a threshold of what people are willing to accept or not accept on the board, and we will, the administration is working to make modifications to that budget, and you saw the timeframe there. Board members, I just encourage you to talk to your contacts in the community and see what the feeling is of people from what they've heard, so that when we get back together, we can debate as we should publicly where we're going with this. Any comments on it?
Yeah, just a quick comment. The Facilities and Operations Committee, when it meets, that's a public meeting, and that's a place where if you have comments and want to say something, I think that's the place to go, because, you know, the next vote's going to be, gee, something awful happens if we don't deal with it at that meeting. So the time to do and speak up is the Facilities meeting, which is coming in about two weeks, as I recall.
Thanks, Dr. Nippert. And a reminder, we're doing this in a time of not knowing what the state budget looks like, not been approved, and at the federal level, at minimum uncertainty and maximum chaos with what's going on with federal funding. So it's a challenging road in front of us. Anything else? Tanya?
Yes. You said you had to kind of dial in some of the figures there. Will that be done in two weeks, or possibly? Maybe? Hopefully? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 5, Report of our Superintendent, Dr. David Finney.
Thank you, sir. Two things I'd like to highlight this evening. First is the PGHS March Madness College and Career Event, which recently wrapped up. This is our second version of this. This was led by our school counseling team, in particular, Ms. Carrie Ebert, who put this together. So in the course of three weeks, we had 51 post-secondary options were represented, including employment, trade schools, unions, community colleges, and four-year colleges. Almost 1,000 student visits were logged to the College Career Fair. Over 100 students gained career advice from five career speakers, so a career speaker series was new this year, and expertly done. About 20 students will share their high school journey in preparation for the post-secondary world with Lower Potsgrove's 5th grade class on March 27th. So our efforts on college career readiness don't start at the high school, they come all the way down to the elementary schools. And another interesting wrinkle is our high school students, including those in Mrs. Pierce's digital arts class, actually designed the marketing materials, including the promotional flyers and logos that you saw on our website. So excellent work all around. The other thing I'd like to bring up, and you've heard me talk about this before, but it's yet another step in this partnership, is Michaela's Voice. So the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Bureau of Special Education, announced continuing inclusive programming for the 2425 school year. At no cost to districts via grant funds, Michaela's Voice offers programming to help build a positive and inclusive school culture and ensure the well-being of staff and students. Potsgrove has participated over the last two years at Rocks West and Lower in this programming. This year, we're finishing our work with this project and have students from our middle school and high school participating in the mentoring component of this project in collaboration with Ringing Rocks Elementary and West Potsgrove Elementary students. On March 28th, there will be an assembly for our secondary student mentors. They will travel to the elementary schools to complete an art project with students with and without disabilities, and this opportunity allows our middle and high school students to further develop their mentoring abilities with our younger students through the activities that foster a deeper sense of belonging, understanding, compassion, and kindness for all. So we're real proud of these efforts, and actually, this in no small way started all because of one of our board members. Anique Ruiz Brown was the one who first brought this program to our attention, and it's now been a three-year journey. So thank you, and that's all I have.
I just had a question. I don't know if you or maybe somebody from our guidance department could explain a little bit about the career speakers.
So new this year, and I do see one of our school counselors for the high school in the audience, new this year was an addition of a career speaker series. So there were five, I think I'm getting this right, there were five career speakers invited, and I believe all five of them were alumni. So they ranged in different, five different careers. They were, the career that they were speaking about was advertised to our students, and there was a signup sheet where I think up to 25 kids could come and hear that career speaker. So that was a new thing that we did. Haven't yet seen the feedback on it. The anecdotal feedback I heard on it was fantastic. So it's something we'll look and see if this is something worth continuing to do.
Moves us to Agenda Item Number Six, Receiving of Accounts.
Motion to approve the receiving of accounts for audit 6.1.
We have a motion and a second to approve the receiving of accounts for audit. Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item Number Seven, Treasurer's Report.
Like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for 7.1.
Motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to call attention to the format of it. The format of it includes a summary of all revenue with local sources, state sources, and federal sources during the given period, so the month, as well as expenditures. Then it includes a kind of holistic look at assets, liabilities, and fund balance, and then a breakdown of where we are on major line items relative to budget and relative to the year prior, and then a, finally, an accounting of all of our other accounts that aren't part of the general ledger, or aren't part of our main checking account.
Thank you. Did we, you made a comment, we did not vote. Any other comments on treasurer's report? So we have a motion and a second on treasurer's report. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight, Personnel, beginning with 8.1, Administrative Staff Appointments.
Like to make a motion to approve 8.1, Dean of Students for the Middle School.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the dean of students for the middle school. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I would just like to take a second. I see Herb in the audience. If you'd stand up and wave hi to the board, and everyone. And I don't think you came alone this evening. Is that true? Very nice to meet you, and congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations, Mr. Beasley. Moves us to 8.2, Professional Staff Appointments.
Like to make a motion to approve 8.2, Guidance Counselor for Lower Potsgrove.
Motion and a second to approve Guidance Counselor for Lower Potsgrove. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.3, Professional Staff Resignations.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 8.3 through 8.8.
We have a motion and a second to approve 8.3 through 8.8, which includes professional staff resignations, leave of absences of support and professional staff, support staff appointments, support staff resignation and terminations, supplemental staff, non-athletic appointments, and rescinding an independent contractor agreement, which was 8.8. Any discussion on any of those items? If no discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motions pass. Moves us to Agenda Item Number Nine, Action Items, Business. This is for the purchase of 472 passenger buses.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 9.1 for the purchase of those four set buses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Action Item 9 for the purchase of 472 passenger school buses. Any discussion?
Just a quick point. This was brought up at the last Finance Committee meeting, and what was brought up was exploring the need for school buses, and I believe it was pointed out earlier, not at this meeting, but one of those buses is essentially inoperative. So after much discussion, the administration came back, we need four buses, and we normally purchase buses at the rate of one, correct me if I'm wrong?
About two to three.
Okay, I thought it was one, but a two to three? Then I'm, then there's, then the whole, or the bus deficit got bigger in my mind. But anyway, this has been thoroughly discussed, and this was administration's approval. The students, the kiddos need to be able to get here, and we need a way to get them here, so this is an immediate solution.
Thank you, Dr. Nippert. Any other discussion on the buses? So we have a motion and a second for approval of these 472 passenger school buses. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item Number 10, this is the approval of the renewal agreement for the Ed Options Academy.
Like to make a motion to approve 10.1 for the renewal agreement for Ed Options Academy.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 11, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Update, Anique Ruiz
So we met February 26, 2025. You guys all have the documents that I sent you that detail everything, but I'm just going to give a brief overview. There was a presentation from the Office of Facilities and Operations, which provided updates on current and upcoming MCIU building projects. The Executive Director's Report, the results of the MCIU annual audit, was presented by CPA Audit Manager for Barbican Thornton and Company. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing them, their name correctly. Barbican. The legislative update highlights, so I have a few. Governor Shapiro's proposed state budget includes a $526 million increase to help ensure all schools have fair and adequate funding, $125 million to improve and repair school buildings, $100 million in grants to enhance school safety and security, and $14.6 million in additional funding for early intervention services that support young children with developmental delays or disabilities. There were also several proposed state bills focused on education reform, including a moratorium on new cyber charter schools, requiring districts to offer their own cyber programs before paying cyber charters, and establishing stronger data privacy protections for schools, and requiring schools to consider installing panic alarm systems during their annual safety reviews. For policy adoptions, there were some first and second readings. There was a first reading for policy 815.1, which is the use of generative artificial intelligence in education. I thought that was pretty interesting. Obviously, that's where the future is, so we'll be visiting that soon. The Office of Business Services reported on financial reports, budget approvals, contract approvals, program budgets, including Head Start and the revised Project Aware Grant. The Office of Early Childhood Services approved MOUs for therapy services and other agreements, waivers, supports for physical therapy, personal care assistance, and other special instruction programs across all of MCIU. We also talked about the Office of Facilities and Operations, approved upcoming conference room, use of two architectural projects, a redesign of a meeting space, and renovations to relocate the Hearing Center. The Office of Innovation and Strategic Partnership reported on approved grant and professional development agreements, including funding from IU1 to support para educator career advancements, and partnership with IU29 to provide art-based training for educators. And lastly, we had several office reports on approved service agreements, training contracts, and technology partnerships that support student learning, staff development, and district operations across the region. Next meeting is tomorrow, March 26.
Anique, thank you. This moves us to Agenda Item 12, which is reports of the board committees, beginning first with 12.1, our Policy Committee, which is chaired by Bill Thompson, who's joining us virtually tonight, but this is not a report, it's just approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve 12.1, the approval of the meeting minutes for Policy Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Policy Committee of the meeting for February 25th. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Second Committee Report is our Operations Finance Committee from their March 11 meeting. Dr. Charles Nippert is the chair of this committee.
My voice is loud enough that it probably carries, but... My voice is loud enough that it probably carries, but it doesn't make it onto the tape. But anyway, the second item was the school bus purchases, which we've already talked about. And as far as operations, there were no operations, so the meeting adjourned at 6:46. Are there any questions? One of these days, I'll learn how to turn that the red light means I'm supposed to Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nippert. The third of the four committee reports is our Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee, which is chaired by Patty Grimm. Patty is not with us at the board meeting tonight, so we are having the presentation. We're honored to have Steve here, Steve Onzbuck, to present the report of the March 18 meeting.
Thank you. So we met March 18th, had a great hour discussion of a variety of things happening in our ACC meeting. First was a discussion on our middle school wrestling practice mats in a partnership with our Pots Grove Youth Wrestling Club. We are in the need to upgrade our mats. They are in poor condition, and through a partnership with them, they've agreed to donate half the cost of the purchase of the mats. The mats are going to be $17,691.60. They have offered to split the cost with the district because they use, in addition to our middle school wrestling program, our youth program also uses these mats. So they want to donate half the cost, so the cost to our district would be $8,845.80, which would be applied to our budget for next year, but to upgrade our mats for both programs. In addition, I highlighted our winter sports, our Winter Sports All Academic, All Division, All Conference, and Citizen Athlete. Was going to recognize Cecilia Olak. She was an award winner of our All Academic, so I wanted to highlight her publicly. In addition, our participation numbers this spring currently at the high school, well, both of our numbers at the middle school and the high school are up this spring regarding student-athlete participation. 234 students at the high school and 152 students currently participating at the middle school. I did bring up to the committee that I think the increase is we use a new platform, an online registration platform called Student Central, and I believe getting that communication out, parents and students both have to sign up for it, so it streamlines our communication regularly to go over when the start dates are, what's needed, what types of physical forms and requirements for participation. So I do think that has helped streamline our process, which I'm very happy about in the Athletic Department. The other thing that we discussed in the committee is another partnership with the Pots Grove Future Falcons, which is our youth football and cheerleading program. We have done a lot of things with them, including the scoreboard on the middle school stadium field. They have upgraded some sheds just to clean up some areas of storage. So they would like to donate another shed for their use at Lower Pots Grove because they have a variety of equipment that they use for practices. There is a current shed there that they have outgrown. So not only are they going to donate a shed and install it at their cost, they're going to give us their old shed so we can use that shed for our softball and field hockey program. So again, two great partnerships that we have currently with our youth programs within Pots Grove. Moving out of the athletic side to the co-curricular side, at our last committee meeting, I highlighted all the non-athletic activities going on with our supplemental clubs at the high school. At this meeting, Mr. Palladino highlighted or gave me a report of everything going on this year regarding our non-athletic programs at the middle school, so we discuss that within the committee. On the communication, the community relations side, Mrs. Kleinfeldter discussed the theater productions this year. We just had our high school musical, Fill It On The Roof, which was outstanding. Credit to everybody that was involved. The cast provided a senior citizens preview show, as well as previews to three of our elementary schools and our high school students. I can tell you, I was there Friday night, and I saw a buddy of mine with his elementary daughter, and they were there because of those preview shows. So it absolutely worked. And how she posted and highlighted events leading up to the musical. An article about the production was also published in The Travelers with the post to assist in marketing the musical to the public. She also highlighted the middle school theater program that's coming up, the Sustical Junior, which is this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the middle school. Mrs. Kleinfeldter also discussed the collaboration with the PGA-F regarding a Falcon alumni network that she has created. A survey has been distributed through email, on social media, and to our website to reconnect our Falcon alumni. So that is something in the works that she has going, and Dr. Finerty talked about it as well. So I know it's something that we're very excited about, to connect our alumni with the happenings that are going on within the Pots Grove School District. Dr. Finerty did mention the Pots Grove High School March Madness. I do have the names of the five career speakers, so I will highlight them publicly, if that's all right. Mia Gambino, she was a Pots Grove graduate and a former international athlete and college coach, customer success manager at Sports Recruit. The next one was Sergeant Rob Redd Willis, West Pots Grove Police Officer. Matt Gribosh, an entrepreneur finding success through a non-traditional path. Jennifer Heffernan, a family nurse practitioner. And the last one was James Coleman, President of J Factor Embedded Technologies, and he's a current NFL referee. So they were the five career speakers that we had for our students, which was a big hit talking to our students as well. And then lastly, Mrs. Kleinfeldter gave a recap on her social media. She said the district's reach on Instagram has increased significantly since the start utilizing Instagram Stories and Reels. All students' Stories and Reels are the new up-and-coming thing, which is even I'm dating myself on Stories and Reels. But that's, and the few Reels that everybody has liked were the Color Day Highlight Reel, What Do You Love About Pots Grove, the Boys Basketball Championship Reels, and the Shake My Hand in Character Reel. So that has increased our viewership. And the last thing that I added under New Business was our 2025 Athletic Hall of Fame class. We just publicly announced our Athletic Hall of Fame class. We typically recognize and did a ceremony in the spring, but we have now since moved that to the fall. So our Hall of Fame will be on Saturday, September 20, in the library. We will highlight members, the inductees, on our Friday Night Football game on September 19. And the inductees are Ray Golffus, a class of 1967. He was a Pots Grove Athletic Community Advocate. Our 2009 High School Football Team. Joseph Bell, class of 2010. He was a basketball player and a 1,000-point scorer. Terrell Chestnut, class of 2011, football, basketball, and track and field athlete. And Emily Glennecky, class of 2016, swimming athlete. So they will all be with us and confirm their attendance for our Athletic Hall of Fame in September of 2025. And that's lengthy, but that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Fourth and final of our committee reports is the March 18 meeting of the Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology Committee, also known as CIT. That is chaired by Jim Lappick. Jim?
Mr. Onzbuck left a microphone on for me. Thank you for that, Steve. The Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology Committee met on March 18. That evening, we had two agenda items. The first was our multi-tiered system of supports, as well as our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports goal. We call it multi-tiered system of supports. We like our acronyms in education, so that's our MTSS goal that we're working on. Really, it provides a framework through which we do screening, monitoring, and intervening of our students based upon the data that we have on them. We look at academic behavioral discipline and social-emotional learning data, in addition to academic data on that evening. We also looked at the PA Youth Survey, our PAES data, and began to talk about the action plan and revised action plan that will need to occur for that. The data from that survey will be further reviewed at our Schools Partnership Meeting in May, which will also include updates of that action plan, as well as goals associated with that. As we continue to look forward with our MTSS goal, we're really looking at continued implementation of our MTSS framework, really accelerating our data-informed practices associated with that, ensuring the fidelity of our data, and acting on all data trends that we see when we see them. The second agenda item was a personal finance update. This comes to us from the state of Pennsylvania with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Effective with the 2027 school year, all Pennsylvania schools will need to implement a mandatory personal finance course, and that will need to occur somewhere between grades nine and 12. The course must be at least half a credit, and we will be looking at and following standards that are provided for us. Those standards become effective on July 1, 2026, which is also the time when our course will need to become effective. The district has the freedom, so to speak, in terms of developing the curriculum, but again, we will use those developed standards to fully develop that. Our CIT Committee will be working throughout the remainder of the year in our final two CIT meetings, really to make a number of decisions. But that will include, when do we want to offer this to our students? What do we want to name the course? The value of the course in terms of credit? How to apply said credit? For example, towards an elective, towards mathematics, whatever the case might be? Who will teach it? And how the local graduation requirements that we have here in Pots Grove for our students may need to shift or will shift in order to accommodate for this? So to prepare for all that, we've developed a checklist that we'll be sharing out at the April CIT meeting, and then we'll be making decisions about that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. This moves us to Agenda Item 13, New Business, and let's begin with Dr. Nippert.
Thank you. Steve, I want to talk a little bit about the fiddler. This is not an easy play. I said it last time, and it's a very difficult play. You know, the play's going to be hard when the last scene is a group of Russian soldiers burning and destroying a Jewish city. That's not a happy ending. And it's a stretch for the people who are running the play to pick a play that difficult. And it's a stretch because, among other things, you've got fairly heavy themes, and I'll be as brief as I can, but consider this plot line is that marriages are arranged. You have to take the students and get them to accept a point of an arranged marriage. That was hard, and it's a stretched goal for the people who chose the play, and it's a stretched goal for the students who performed in that play. And that was a very tough act for them to do. And it was a very brave decision to do it, and it was a brave decision for the performance. And I think this is what public education does best, dealing with an audience on a theme that's very difficult. And it's more difficult than some of the plots on Star Trek. But let me just wrap it up because I don't want to talk too long. Steve, tell your class or tell the students so that the word gets back to them that their performance was really outstanding, and all I can say for them is le chaim, to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nippert. Tanya?
I can't follow that up, no. Actually, I will say, it is great to see so many people here. So that is very nice to see. Please keep coming out to meetings.
Thanks, Anique.
Just a couple things. We have the, Pots Grove Village has our event tomorrow, IEP M504 101 Panel. That's here in the high school library, 6:00 to 6:30. You could still register. Quick slideshow about just basics on IEPs and 504s, but then we're going to break out into discussions, and it's just going to be, you know, up to you guys to see what we're going to talk about. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that I just wanted to share some, like, really exciting news about our district and the Special Olympics. So Special Olympics Pennsylvania is celebrating a major milestone. There are now 500 unified championship schools across the state, and Pots Grove is one of them. Unified sports, students with and without disabilities, playing together, working together, having a great time. We have our track, track and field, and bocce. But they have tons of different sports, and they have them at middle schools and at high schools. So hopefully, we'll get middle school. So just a really proud moment for unified sports, and it's a great reminder that the power of inclusion, we can accomplish anything. And what was really cool at the PDE Conference, they were celebrating this, and they had a huge marching band, and the athletes came in, and they were all cheering, and it was just like this great, wonderful feeling. It was amazing. The other thing, did I ever, did I talk about Michaela's Voice before the last meeting? I can't remember. No? Okay, good. Well, no. So during Read Across America Week, I read some of the books from that program. So not only do they have some art projects and different types of programs, assemblies, kindness campaigns, things like that, there are three books, three, four books, that they sell on the website. The money goes towards different inclusive programs, michaelasvoice.org. But what was great about these books is that they are written by students, by friends, peers of some of these children, and ones about, written and drawn, illustrated, about just friendship, about the spectrum, about one, a child in a wheelchair, just all these amazing things, and just encouraging kindness and acceptance. And when I was reading these to the kids, I felt like they really, you know, were listening. Of course, during the Q&amp;A part, all they were asking about is longer lunch and more recess, but I still think they got the friendship and the kindness part. So that was, that was pretty cool. And that was it. I did a lot of talking, so I'm done.
Anique, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's the first time. So tomorrow is an early dismissal. It's an Act 80 day, so professional development for our staff. And as Mr. Onzbuck mentioned, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it is the middle schools' turn for the middle school players to put on Sustical Junior, so I'm excited to see that. Please come out and support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Onzbuck and Dr. Nippert talked about the play and the students and the job they did on the stage. I want to give a shout out to the students involved in the play. They didn't have the spotlight shined on them. There's a group of people that make the play successful, and if they do their job, you don't see them. So if they're listening or their parents are listening, the sound crew, don't know if you noticed them, several years ago, this board raised a concern about the quality of the sound. It is an enormous improvement in terms of that. I was at three of the shows, a rehearsal and the Thursday and Saturday show, and there was a mic drop during one of the performances, and it was corrected in a matter of minutes, that there was a runner from the sound crew going backstage, making that correction, and it was fixed. It was beautiful. Those kids don't have a spotlight shined on them, but it should be. You're pointing there. You're the one that fixed the mic drop? Yeah? Nice, nice job. There's a lighting crew that deserves a round of applause, and it's not only the students, it's the teachers and the volunteer staff working with them. The lighting crew, when I went to the rehearsal, the spotlight wasn't following the actors and actresses that were on the stage, as you would expect at a rehearsal, because you're doing that. It's almost a funny phrase to say, but at the two nights of the shows there, it was spot-on. You only notice it when the spotlight's not there on the person, but you really rarely turn around and see the kids up there operating those big lights, and it's not easy to follow someone. Job well done. The pit orchestra, again, you really don't know what the... The pit orchestra, again, you really don't know what they're doing unless they make a mistake. Just a phenomenal job with the pit orchestra from all the instrumentalists. My personal favorite, because I was a drummer myself, is the drummer who was there. Just a phenomenal job, if you are listening. I've told him that personally, but again, if he's doing his job, you don't even pay attention to him, because your eyes are on the stage. The stage set people, there's a group of students who made or helped make a lot of those sets. And again, the show doesn't go on unless those sets are there, and unless they look good, you only notice them when they look bad, because they complement what's going on in the stage with them. And lastly, the stage crew, these are people that get on the stage, but usually the lights are out when they're on, and they wear black, too, so that you don't see them that well. But there's a whole host of people that is as large, if not larger, than the actors and actresses that are there that make the show go on, and they just deserve a congratulations, a job well done. So, thank you for that. Ashley?
Just wanted to give a brief heads up on something that Anik and Tanya and I are all involved in, which is, it's going to be a town hall, which I was actually involved in it last year. I know, I think Jim, you came, Al was there. It's, it's based on, basically, fair funding within the schools, and it is, Pottstown and Pots Grove are highlighted. There will be state legislators there, we're not sure who's going to be speaking at, but we're, the three of us are participating, we just don't quite know how yet. It's, it's all being planned, there's Zoom meetings and all that good stuff, but it, it really wants, it's to spotlight the lack of fair funding within this area, and, and how that impacts our communities, our students, everything. So I will have more information to come.
Thank you, Ashley. That's important information for all of our staff. Bill, I skipped over you because you weren't here, you were like one of those people that work off, offstage, but I know you're online. Any new business from you?
I have nothing tonight.
Are you feeling better?
Not really.
That's not good, Bill.
Happy to come and infect everybody.
You take care of yourself, all right, and I appreciate you being here.
All right.
Thank you, Bill. Jim?
Nothing really other than to comment, Ashley said about the fair funding. I was there as an audience member last year, and it really was informative, and it was great to hear different state reps and different people in the, you know, from realtors and different walks of life, speaking about the fair funding and how it affects everyone in multiple ways. So as, as an audience member, I mean, I would recommend people go out to see and listen to this, because there was, you know, some I knew, but there were some things that were, oh, okay, you know, didn't realize that, so it's, it's worth it to go.
Thank you. Louis?
Just two things very quickly. I'd like to echo the sentiment that Tanya had, where it's nice to see a few more faces than normal in the crowd, you know, a couple, a couple extra seats filled, which I think is great. And just to echo a point I think Jay you made a while back in regards to committee meetings, and we had the opportunity to review four sets of committee meeting minutes today. And as has been mentioned, I believe, it was by you, Jay, a lot of the work that goes into the agenda items that we review at meetings like this one, that work happens in the background at those committee meetings. So if anyone's interested in, you know, what's going on in the district, and wants to better understand, you know, how we get to where we are at these meetings, I think it's a great opportunity to do so by, you know, reviewing these committee meetings or even attending.
Louis, thank you. Moves us to Agenda Item Fourteen, Public Comment. Is there any comment from anyone in the audience? This can be on anything, it is not limited to agenda items. Anything. Last chance to hear yourself on a microphone. Anything online? Nothing? And before I move for adjournment, I want to reinforce something Dr. Finnerty said, parents, remember that tomorrow is an early dismissal day. And also a shout out for the middle school, the Spring Musical, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, March twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Next meeting of the board is April eighth at seven o'clock here. That moves us to a motion to adjourn. Motion in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.